Once we work through that, this case will close the, this continued regular meeting, the promotion to adjournment, and then we'll open up the continuation of the Texas. Do you need to give us an opening? Do you need to roll ball?
You have a call for Snapper Crowell.
Here.
James Blacker.
Here.
Richard Kiefer.
Here.
Richard Brunnion.
Here.
William Flott.
Yes.
Joe Lering.
Here.
Joe Huesman.
Here.
Okay, overview is that the main component on this is the special use of U.A.F. that he wanted the Grand Ma Coop Association to obtain a permit from the state. And you have the minutes on the back end of this. This is for them to put up a window down U.A.N. storage tank, which was discussed at the earlier meeting. He wanted them to get the state permit, and they did in fact get the state permit. And you have a copy of that in front of you, page 14. It's both permits. You have the Illinois Department of Agriculture permit on top. It was some of the Bureau of Agriculture programs. And then further back into the document, you have a copy of the Illinois EPA permit. That's two pages from the back is where that went. It's the last two pages of the Illinois Agriculture Protection Agency permit approving this dated September 13th this year. So you have both, both of the two permits that go along with that.
Who represents this case? Both of you. You, I believe you were previously sworn in. Can you state your name again for the record?
Phil Bridge.
So it looks like you've got the permits that were requested. I'm looking through my notes to see what other outstanding questions that we can add, if we had any. If any member of the zoning board has questions or issues with what they have in front of them. Please feel free to speak out.
We had the water well situation. Wasn't we going to notify people? Is that correct on this?
We did. I notified, I put a note or memo on the doors or in the doors or whatever, the five closest.
Residences.
Well, four residences or five residences in the township. The park that you would draw for 400 feet, actually, it does, the 400 feet just had two more properties, which were both owned by Grand Ma Coop. So they're the owners of those properties. But it fell under those conditions too. 400 foot wells are more for community well concerns as opposed to private wells. If the environmental protection law, I.E.K. laws indicate that if any of the wells are contaminated anyway, then it's responsibility of, in this case, Grand Ma Coop to provide water to them in any way as possible. And any private water wells that are within 200 feet can be drilled and replaced within 200 feet of that area also.
They can be?
Can be, yes. As long as they're at least 200 feet away, they can be drilled there.
Anything closer than 200 would not be.
Correct.
And Donnie Simmons says he won't let them drill.
That's... That was my question.
Am I correct?
Yeah.
The testimony was, Donnie Simmons will not allow.
He said he will not approve wells to be dug.
The only well within 200 feet, right now, this is the township, and it's not potable. It is not a potable well.
Are you, are you sure? Because that first house, that well is at the back of the house. It is not at the front of the house.
233 feet.
I see. All right.
How is, how is the township building a non-potable well? Is it used for drinking water? Is it used in a bathroom? Then it's potable.
Donnie here.
He's not.
Do either of these permits take that, anything like that into consideration, or that's all strictly under Donnie's review?
Special condition number one on the I.E.P.A. permit.
Do we know what 14.2 says? Section 14.2 is on our environmental protection act. Do you guys know what it says? No?
Give me just a moment. The mayor may not say.
What's the distance on the well, tank edge, the well for this township building?
150 by feet.
I think I got everything for regulations as far as administrative code and J.C.A.R. rules for them putting in the tank, which covers some of those issues, but I've not had section 14.2 there, environmental protection.
When you contacted these people, what was the result of that, Chuck? You told them about this meeting, or?
They were in the memo. Nobody was, Friday, nobody was home, so.
There's nobody here that has a problem.
Did these guys come after?
No.
What's the definition of potable water?
Water that either can be consumed or is being consumed. So if you have a sink fixture.
So it's drinkable water?
It's drinkable water. If you have a sink fixture in the bathroom, somebody could fill their coffee cup up. Unless it's clearly marked. I mean, there's a whole process to demarcate non-potable water. It actually talks about that in special condition three. A lot of tanks and fixtures are painted purple, clearly marked as non-potable.
So the township has signed what says non-potable water at each outlet? Would be in the bathroom and where their hose is?
That you have in place right now? Why, why would they have that now? Why would they have that now?
Because that's what they asked before. They asked if that water was not potable, if there'd be signs for it.
No, no, no. Why, but why would they have it now? What would be the reason behind them having a non-potable well supply now? Today?
Because that's the only reason, that's, there's only one employee that works there. And that's what they, that's what the EPA asked for, was how do they get their drinking water if they're working in the building? And what are those two sources? Or what does the outlets use for?
I didn't, Mike's asking, why are those signs already there already? They put that up when they put the building up?
How, how did they determine it's non-potable water?
Because they don't need it for anything. They don't, they don't use that for drinking water.
So just because they don't use it, they call it non-potable water?
Yep.
So the only purpose of the water is to wash equipment and flush it toward them.
Is it a dug well or a tub well?
Kind of at a loss without this 14.2. I mean, the permittee has to comply with 14.2, but doesn't have it. We don't have it either, but.
It'll take five minutes for him to Google it.
14.2. Sitting here doing nothing else. I've got it.
You all right, go, buddy?
Yeah.
Watch your data fly, man. Want me to read it?
Yes.
Section 14.2, new potential source or route, minimum setback zone. A minimum setback zone is established for the location of each new potential source or new potential route as follows. Section A, except as provided in subsections B, C, and H of this section, no new potential route or potential primary source or potential secondary source may be placed within 200 feet of any existing or permitted community water supply well or other potable water supply well. Section B, the owner of a new potential primary source or a potential secondary source or a potential route may secure a waiver from the requirement of subsection A of this section for a potable water supply well other than a community water supply well. A written request for a waiver shall be made to the owner of the water well and the agency. Such requests shall identify the new or proposed potential source or potential route. Shall generally describe the possible effect of such potential source or potential route upon the water well and any applicable technology-based controls, which will be utilized to minimize the potential for contamination, and shall state whether and under what conditions the requestor will provide an alternative potable water supply. Waiver may be granted by the owner of the water well no less than 90 days after receipt of the request unless prior to such time the agency notifies the well owner that it does not concur with the request. The agency shall not concur with any such request which fails to adequately describe reasonably foreseeable effects of the potential source or potential route upon the water well or any applicable technology-based controls. Such notification by the agency shall be in writing and shall include a statement of reasons for the non-concurrence. Waiver of the minimum setback zone established under subsection A of this section shall extinguish the water well owner's rights under section 6B of the Illinois Waterwell Construction Code, but shall not preclude enforcement of any law regarding water pollution. If the owner of the water well has not granted a waiver within 120 days after the receipt of the request, or the agency has notified the owner that it does not concur with the request, the owner of a potential source or potential route may file a petition for an exception with the board and the agency pursuant to subsection C of this section. No waiver under this section is required where the potable water supply well is part of a private water system as defined in the Illinois Groundwater Protection Act, and the owner of such well will also be the owner of a new potential secondary source or a potential route. In such instances, a prohibition of 75 feet shall apply, and the owner shall notify the agency of the intended action so that the agency may provide information regarding the potential hazards associated with location of a potential secondary source or potential route in close proximity to a potable water supply well. C, the board may grant an exception from the setback requirements of this section and subsection E of the section 14.3 to the owner of a new potential route, a new potential primary source other than land filling or land treating, or a new potential secondary source. The owner seeking an exception with respect to a community water supply well shall file a petition with the board and the agency. The owner seeking an exception with respect to a potable water supply well other than a community water supply well shall file a petition with the board and the agency and set forth therein the circumstances under which a waiver has been sought but not obtained pursuant to subsection B of this section. A petition shall be accompanied by proof that the owner of each potable water supply well for which setback requirements would be affected by the requested exception has been notified and been provided with a copy of the petition. A petition shall set forth such facts as may be required to support an exception, including a general description of the potential impacts of such potential source or potential route upon groundwater in the affected water well, and an explanation of the applicable technology based controls, which will be utilized to minimize the potential for contamination of the potable water supply well. You guys, there's, I didn't even get to D yet.
Yeah.
G, okay.
Well, with the special condition number three, that's referring, is that referring to the onsite well at Grand Ma Coop, correct? So they say you have to comply with section 14.2 of the Illinois EPA with respect to the potable water supply well. But then special condition number three, if they just would have referenced that they are aware there's a well that's potentially potable water, but they could identify it as, they could tell us or put it in your, in your permit here, which I don't even know if that's possible, to go back and have them redo that, to say this specific site. Because you're saying that the Illinois EPA told you that they would allow it if they marked the township sinks.
Yeah. There's a letter from the township. Yeah. A letter here from the township road commissioner, who's the one that works in that building. That answers all their, that answered all their questions due to the well being within the 200 feet.
Do we have that?
Do we have that?
No.
Do you have the rest of it? The plumbing inside? You'll get it back, because it's getting out.
Yeah, and so that's a letter to the township supervisor?
From, from.
From the township supervisor to the...
Yeah, these were just questions that the EPA asked during their permitting process.
So it's a letter to back to the EPA?
Also, they did come see you guys, eh?
No, they just called about it. Because we told them about the well and all that stuff.
Okay.
Well, that covers it, and we might ask, make copies and then...
Yeah, that's fine.
And then...
I got copies on my computer, so you can have that copy. I scanned it all. Does anybody want to flip through this 14 tattoo?
Nope.
I was reading with you.
Okay.
Good night.
There's a lot.
Oh, we don't know who this is to.
Jeff Plessner, is that who you mean?
Well, yeah, no, I was looking for it to say, you know, a letter addressed to the Illinois EPA in response to their questions. So it's just, if you want to make a...
Nathaniel Sparks is the guy that I was talking to. See, I spoke.
I guess I'm comfortable with that letter.
You say you are?
Yeah.
You said it's over 200 feet to that other well?
Yeah, 233.
Does Donnie have anything left to read?
He don't have anything to do with it. He had no.
He didn't have anything to say about it.
He didn't have responsibility. He decided responsibility's on a pretty well.
So my question is, and it's something we have to ask Donnie is, say that house's well fails, is he going to approve them to get a new well? Dig a new well?
No, he can, because it's only pertaining to community wells, private wells, they can, if I remember.
If it's over 200 feet.
Yeah.
Unless the soil is...
If they, if he's limited, but if he can't find water within the, he has to cross that 200-foot line, that homeowner is probably not going to, they're not going to get their well permitted.
What was the, what was the distance of the well? The closest house, you said 250, what?
233.
233, and that's at the back of the lot?
No, that's at the, it's, the well is actually at his back door.
Yeah.
So he got the front yard, and he has to go to that spot.
Which is where all the rest of the wells are on that street.
I think that 14.2 would actually put the burden back on these guys.
Well, if it was contaminated by the tank, the fertilizer, yes, then they got to get water to them from that well.
Yeah, it doesn't matter. They're going to get water.
Right. The condition on the state permit does with the well permits, law regulation, not that one. It does in fact put the burden back on them. But it's true.
Well, if it's contaminated, that's one thing. But like I said, if a well failed, I just want to make sure that they're still going to be able to dig a new well.
And they, and they are able to as a private well?
Okay.
Believe you dig it, but they might not get it permitted.
No. Chuck, is that, is that, is my understanding incorrect? No, it's my understanding, it's over 200 feet.
Right, if it's over 200, I just don't know. Maybe 33 feet, it's not a big deal, maybe there's plenty of water there, I don't know. I guess, I think outside of our concern. Where is that letter? Though we could keep it, or we could. Could attach.
We can have this.
Yeah.
Were there any bits from that last meeting yet?
Yeah, it's in the back of your packet.
Yeah. I found it finally.
If you flip to the back.
Consider.
Third or fourth page, page five is where it starts, with the minutes.
Consider nine. Looks at rules of setback at 200 feet, and it requires some over 400 feet for other wells.
If you look at the date of the 400, community wells, not private wells.
But I thought he said that night that he wouldn't approve a well with 400 feet. To be read up, even though the 200 feet is what EPA says is okay.
It had to do with soil profile, if I remember right, heavier...
I thought it had to do with the type of well.
Yeah.
Whether it's a bored well or a dug well. Because if it's only so many feet deep, which was, like in the case of a bored well, if it's only 30 feet deep, then it has to be 400 feet away. If it's a dug well, at, you know, 100 feet, then it has to be 200 feet away.
Yeah, he just testified it in here, right?
Or vice versa, I'm not sure, because he didn't really...
Will you guys actually fill the tank with your own water? Or does it, does the product come to you diluted correctly?
It comes diluted, yeah.
So you don't top it off, or bring it to, whatever?
No.
Fill next, fill next water with it when they get it sprayed, right? Or you spray it straight?
Spray it straight, 32.
Oh, 30, spray 32.
We don't, we don't. Because you have to, you have to get it tested to prove that's what you're selling. That's what you say you're selling.
Everything else is in place for the backflow scenario.
Okay, any other questions from the zoning board? You may have done this at the last meeting, but I'm just going to ask in case, there's any interested parties or objectors here on this case? Do you have any closing statements? All right. Can we close this case? Cases?
You did have a suggestion on the motion that you have, with the condition that Illinois almost proposed special use, including proposed liquefied fertilizer operations, also the potable well federal regulations, including state regulations, including I.E.K. and the Department of Agriculture regulations that apply to this proposed use, and conditions that this plant development be completed by, and by blank date unless otherwise approved by zoning board vehicles. And I have that condition, not since you have state plans in front of you at this point. Okay. It's covered all of them.
Right. And all the, all applicable agencies. Because it does leave out, like, the Department of Public Health, and they are involved. So don't add them, just grab everybody.
All federal regulations between the state reg, and state regulations, okay, reads, potable well federal regulations and state regulations.
That's them all.
Including I.E.P.A., the affirmative annex. It's all, all segregation, I just specified the I.E.P.A. and affirmative annex, and any...
So we need a motion. And that's on the special use condition.
Correct.
So do we want to do this in two motions? To keep it clear? Okay. We need a, a motion, let's do this special use case first.
I'll make the motion to approve SU 4-17 with the added conditions.
Do you want the date? Complete it by?
Date?
Yeah.
What date would you like?
We usually do like within a year, right?
A year, you want, want to do June 1st of 2018? Do you think I'd be, is there going to be a delay on this?
Totally not.
Well, that's what I'm saying, can we actually put a date? I mean, they got to work, they want us fast, they can, but then...
September 4th, 2018. That sounds good.
I'll second it.
Give that a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Michael Crowell.
Yes.
James Blacker.
Yes.
Richard Kiefer.
Yes.
Richard Brunnion.
Yes.
Bill Flott.
Yes.
Joe Lering.
Yes.
Joe Huesman.
Yes.
Okay, now we have this second case to vary, it's case B-2-17. We made a motion on that one.
I'll make a motion. Second.
Okay. So a motion to approve in a second. Any discussion?
All for a question?
Michael Crowell.
Yes.
James Blacker.
Yes.
Richard Kiefer.
Yes.
Richard Brunnion.
Yes.
William Flott.
Yes.
Joe Lering.
Yes.
Yes. Let, maybe. So you've got that in. All right, so we need a motion to close, or adjourn this regular meeting. Exactly, second. Your motion in a second? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Okay. Yeah, just a second to get prepared here, and start our next case.